Hello, everybody, and welcome to Hot in Palm Springs on Promo Homo TV. I am your host, Nicholas Snow. I'm coming to live from the Palm Springs Hilton, or Hilton Palm Springs. I'm not sure how they refer to themselves officially. There is a wonderful mariachi band in the background, and I want you to know that I had issues again with my wireless microphone, so I'm using the built-in microphone on the phone, but it will still be worth your wait, because this is an exciting night. So, this is the official kickoff, because Palm Springs resident Ron DeHart is doing his official kickoff to run for Palm Springs City Council District 3. And I'm live from the kickoff event. Now, I wanted to disclose that I'm a personal friend and longtime colleague with Ron DeHart, in association with Palm Springs Pride, which is a completely different organization, of course, and not affiliated with this campaign. And I have endorsed him, so I wanted to speak upfront about that. And if anybody officially enters the race against Ron and competes with Ron, whoever that may be, you are invited to come on my show upon request. I consider myself an advocacy journalist, which means that I'm clear about the things that I believe in, the values I support, and the causes I endorse, but I'd like to tell the broader stories and leave room for other people to communicate their perspectives as well. So, for full disclosure about that. So, I'm gonna continue, I'm gonna be back in a moment with a lot of exciting information. I'll walk around this crowd if we're not ready to start the program yet, but in the meantime, I want to give a shout out to the businesses and organizations that help this show happen.
For their ongoing support of Promo Homo TV, I would like to thank DAP Health. One of their value statements, "We welcome all people, period." I'm a grateful client of DAP and have been for over ten years. A big shout out to 849 Restaurant and Lounge, including John Pascal and Willie Ryan, longtime supporters of Promo Homo TV. I want to give a big shout out to the hashtag I love gay campaign for helping to expand Promo Homo TV across the Twitterverse, and to local media partners, Kgay1065, Palm Springs, and their sister companies, the hashtag I love gay Palm Springs Podcast and GayDesertGuide.LGBT. I'm a proud media sponsor of Palm Springs Pride, check them out year-round at PSpride.org, and I'm proud to shine a media spotlight on the LGBTQ Community Center of the Desert. Their mission statement, "Creating vibrant community by helping LGBTQ people along their way." Find them at thecentercv.org.
Welcome to the Ron DeHart for our City Council District 3 kickoff. I'm John Taylor from Kgay1065's morning show. I'm reading off my cellphone. I figure if Billy Porter could do it last night at a white party, I can do it here. We're gonna move things along, because there are a few children who are guests of the hotel that have a Marco Polo game that's scheduled in the pool, and we don't want to compete with that. I have been asked to share with you why I support Ron DeHart for City Council. Well, it's pretty simple. After working with Ron on last year's Greater Palm Springs Pride especially, I was truly impressed by Ron's ability to unite our diverse community under extreme post-pandemic conditions and challenges. Ron brought us together, and it was pretty impressive. Every color in our LGBTQ+ flag, our straight allies, every age, every ethnicity, every pronoun, everyone, Ron sees us, our diversity, our talents, our needs, our hopes, our uniqueness. And Ron sees how working together makes us strong. Ron sees us. Palm Springs to me is a family, and I know for a lot of people like me, it's the family we chose. And I am lucky enough to live in a district, number three, where I can choose my chosen family on the ballot. And I can choose a brother who's experienced, understanding, responsive, and empathetic. I can choose, on my ballot, a brother that I can look up to for his ethics, patience, hard work, and dedication. I joke privately with people that I would like to create a Palm Springs bumper sticker. Palm Springs, where so few need so much attention. The amazing people of this community deserve attention. They deserve to be seen. Our city has more creative energy than any place I've lived in my life. And when it comes to attention, that's something Ron does not seek. Ron brings everyone into the light, so that we can all shine. And together, we can send that light from Palm Springs all over the planet and create the world we want to live in. So, I'm voting for Ron DeHart for City Council in District 3. And now, I have the honor to introduce someone who spent nearly three decades serving our city. Please welcome to the podium retired Palm Springs Police Chief Ryan Reyes.
Took this jolly back here, Ron. You know, what an incredible crowd here that's here in support of Ron, or to hear Ron's views in regards to how he will operate in District 3. We all know that he's not one that just looked at a billboard and thought, "I'm gonna run for council." He's got a pretty lengthy background in regards to his association with Palm Springs, with Pride, the Human Rights Commission. I just have two key things I'd like to bring up in regards to my personal knowledge of Ron. Having worked for the city for twenty-seven and a half years, with the last five and a half as Chief of Police, Ron is truly one that does look at things from a much more broader perspective. He's one that does not focus on the norm. He looks at opportunities to improve situations in our city, especially when it comes to the business community. I recall a specific time when Ron came up to me and sat down with me in regards to serving alcohol in a much more broader scale for the Pride event. He took it upon himself to really dig in the weeds and see how it can be done, and he made it happen. And that's just one example of what Ron is willing to do to improve our city. As it comes to the Human Rights Commission, he really looks at the broader perspective. You're gonna learn clearly, Ron is gonna be your District 3 City Council member. There's no doubt about it. And there's no doubt about he's gonna take time from learning from the existing City Council members and those that have come before them. But I can tell you firsthand, Ron will take that knowledge and bundle it up to make his overall decision in the path that he thinks is best for the city of Palm Springs. You know, many years ago, some people may not know, but he actually sat for many years on the LGBTQ Outreach Committee for the Palm Springs Police Department. And when I became chief, I started a town hall meeting from the onset, in my very first year. About year number three, it was Ron's vision that helped me shape the message from that year moving forward. And we made it a point in our discussions that we need to discuss our shortcomings as a police department amongst LGBT community. And it was Ron that helped me shape the message to our community in regards to where we fell short as a police department. So, make no mistake about it, Ron is a supporter of police and fire, but at the same time, he will call out what needs to be called out and addressed. So, for that, Ron, I'm grateful for you.
Thank you, Chief Reyes. I'd also like to acknowledge our ASL interpreter, the fabulous Martin Cogan. And now, I'd like to bring to the stage Sergeant Mike Taurus of the Palm Springs Police Officers Association.
Last, give me some big shoes to follow, huh? Anyway, thank you, Chief. Obviously, we're happy to be here as the association, here to represent the association. My name is Mike Taurus, I'm the Vice President of the Palm Springs Police Officers Association. So, I just want to thank you all. I gotta say, Ron, the chief's kinda said it all. What can I say about Mr. DeHart? Ron DeHart is a dedicated community leader. Every day, Ron proves that he has the talents, creativity, and the foresight to tackle the tough challenges we face here in the city of Palm Springs. In Ron's business career, he gained perspective, and what it is like to work with local governments to find solutions. That's what we need here in the city. Please join me in the Palm Springs Police Officers Association in supporting Ron DeHart for Palm Springs City Council.
Thank you, Sergeant Taurus of the Palm Springs Police Officers Association. We would like to welcome to the stage National Board Vice President of PFLAG, Susan Thompson.
I'm a proud member of Palm Springs PFLAG as well, I'm a dad. So, it's my honor to introduce our next speaker. Many of you know him as a hard worker, even keeled, civically engaged, and a humble leader in our community. Ron DeHart is a community organizer, a longtime public servant, a recognized human rights champion. After twenty years with a focus on international human rights and community service, Ron is ready, prepared, and eager to work as your next Palm Springs City Council Member of District 3. Ron has been preparing for the position of Council Member for over a decade, with his boots on the ground service in the community. As a result, his ability to find collaborative solutions with business owners, elected officials, local philanthropists, nonprofits, and community is trusted and respected. His extensive community experience includes being twice appointed by the City Council to serve on the Human Rights Commission, serving as the City of Palm Springs Business and Transition and Reentry Task Force, serving as a member of Main Street Palm Springs and the local downtown and uptown Palm Springs Business Association. He served on the City of Palm Springs 2020 Census Outreach Committee and the Committee Development Block Grand Citizens Advisory Committee. He's a founding co-chair of the Safe Schools of the Desert Cities, Greater Palm Springs Pride, and the United States Association of Prides, and, next week, again, founding co-chair of the Harvey Milk Diversity Breakfast, as well as the Caesar Chavez Celebration. Ron understands that our locally-owned businesses have a central role to play in the Palm Springs brand, and are among the best engines we have for advancing economic opportunity. Ron understands the value of event-generated tourism for Palm Springs. Through the years, Ron has supported and produced the city's biggest events, attracting hundreds of thousands of visitors, and generating millions of dollars of tourism-related revenue. This includes the Greater Palm Springs Pride Parade and Festival, the Veterans Day Parade, the Festival of Lights, and Cathedral City LGBT Days. With decades behind him as a successful small-business owner, and his past service in the community and civic leadership, Ron is uniquely qualified to take on the important duty as Council Member of District 3. He's not a politician. He doesn't have a special-interest agenda. He's a proud Latino from a working-class family, and he believes that effective government leadership reflects the people it serves. Ron is our neighbor. He is motivated to serve the public interest. He's honest. Don't pay any attention to that. Ron is qualified to serve and take on today's challenges. He's committed. He will bring a balanced perspective on the issues that come to the City Council. Now is the time for Ron to bring his experience to the Palm Springs City Council. Please join me in welcoming our next District 3 City Council Member, Ron DeHart.
Estimados amigos, sean todos bienvenidos. Gracias por estar aquí conmigo el día de hoy y por mostrar su apoyo para mi campaña como miembro del Consejo de la Ciudad de Palm Springs en el Treceiro Distrito. Estoy muy agradecido con cada una de estas. Welcome, friends. Thank you for showing up and showing your support for my campaign to be City Council Member in District 3. With your help, I'll be a strong progressive voice at City Hall and fight for the issues that are important to us: homelessness, crime, small-business development, and tourism. I'm grateful to each of you for your support. I extend my appreciation to Hilton Palm Springs for their support and hosting today. Thank you to retired Chief Reyes for opening the program. I'm proud to have earned the endorsements from not only the Police Officers Association, but you're hearing it first tonight from the Palm Springs Firefighters Association. Now, I'll offer a land acknowledgement. I acknowledge that the land we live and work on today is the original homelands of the Agua Caliente Band of Kaweah Indians. The sovereign band of Agua Caliente people have stewarded this land throughout the generations and continue to steward this land for the future generations. We honor and respect the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we live, and work, and gather as community. Yeah, we've got such a great group of people here tonight, and it's so wonderful to see the turnout of some of our many leaders in the community. I'd like to recognize Mayor Lisa Middleton from the city of Palm Springs, who is with us tonight. We've got Council Member Jeff Coors. Council Member Dennis Woods is with us. And from our neighboring Cathedral City, our favorite Council Member, Raymond Gregory. The Honorable Jenny Foote is with us. JR Roberts. And from Cathedral City, former Council Member Shelley Kaplan is also with us tonight. And I've got a card here. Oh, and John Heilman, the former West Hollywood City Council Member, who served on the council for thirty years. That's incredible. And it really warms my heart to see such a cadre of our Palm Springs City Commissioners, present and former, that are gathered here today. I know the work that you put into helping our city be a better place, so thank you for being here. And last, to recognize, I've got a fellow council candidate who's running in District 2, Jeffrey Bernstein is here tonight. Here's Jeffrey. And so, I'm not in the doghouse. The most important acknowledgement is that of my husband, of twenty-three years, Keith Brand. I say thank you to Keith for agreeing to accept my service and understanding the demand that it's gonna have on both of us. So, thank you. You know, since we announced, I've been asked quite a bit, you know, "Why are you running for City Council?" Almost, and, you know, like, "Are you crazy?" type of thing. I'm running because I really care about the vitality and livability of Palm Springs. As a small-business owner, gay, Hispanic, father of two, I love our small-town atmosphere, and I want to keep our city a great place to live, work, and visit. I grew up in a blue-collar home where volunteerism and a strong work ethic were part of daily life. Being involved in the community has always meant service. I first volunteered in Palm Springs in 2005. I've had boots on the ground and have been directly serving our community since 2012. I was elected to serve as the Chair of the Palm Springs Human Rights Commission five times. I have worked with five police chiefs and served as a member of the Palm Springs Police Chiefs LGBTQ Advisory Committee. So, I really do understand the issues of homelessness, the need for mental health services, and the commitment needed to advance racial justice and ensure our streets are safe. I'm known to be a collaborative leader. It's in my nature to fight for the underdog and to find solutions to get things done. So, my campaign's gonna focus on three crisis-level issues, and we're gonna walk through those tonight. So, first crisis-level issue is having safe streets. I think we've got to focus on reducing crime. Crime reduction is a top priority, and I will work with our police department to make sure we find solutions to lower crime and create safe neighborhoods for all of us. You know, I was on the interview panel to hire our new police chief, Chief Andy Mills, and I really believe in his vision of community policing. And community policing will have my backing through and through. I will work with the police chief to make sure that our policing policies and philosophy are aligned with what the community desires and what the community's expectations are. We need more police. We need more firefighters. The city of Palm Springs has long supported police and fire. We need to continue that tradition of support and make sure that our departments maintain the safety standards and have the equipment that they need. Mental health responders. Having ridden with the police department in Palm Springs, I saw firsthand the need for us to be able to have mental health first responders with our police department. Having people on the ground, providing that support alongside with our police officers, or sometimes on their own, is gonna make all the difference in the world on how we can help serve that population. I'm a huge fan of mental health care. Making sure that we're providing more mental health care services for those that need the support. Ending homelessness isn't just a crisis-level issue. It really is a state of emergency. I will continue to advocate, just as I have already, for programs that offer housing, but also are combined with mental health services, substance abuse services, job training, and financial training. That's just a must. I am a supporter of Housing First Initiative. We have to continue to move forward to get our folks in housing, to provide them the services and support that they need, and Housing First Initiative is the path for us to get there. Our second crisis-level area is economic development tourism. Top of that list is COD campus. That campus must be built. You know, I speak from firsthand experience as a community college student. I grew up the youngest of five, and I'm the first to go to college in our family. I was able to go to college and graduate from a graphic design trade school first, and then community college second. I was able to do that only because community college was accessible to me, and it was on our side of town. We have to get this campus built. We have to fight the COD trustees and their broken promises, and we've got to ensure we have them accountable from this point forward. We owe it to our youth to provide continuing education, technical training, engagement opportunities for our youth, and it's the opportunity for us to train our future workforce. It just has to be done. The other crisis-level issue is tourism. Attracting tourism, tourism is our driving force in the economy. This is not the time for us to run away from tourism. This is the time for us to aggressively go after and enhance what we're doing on the tourist front to create a greater economy in Palm Springs. Go after the cultural tourist. Provide arts programs, entertainment programs, and create events that will show off the uniqueness of Palm Springs. I fully believe that's what we have to do. Supporting small businesses. I'm a champion for small business. Small business is the brainchild of our community. It's the brand of Palm Springs. Our retail shops, the restaurants, our attractions, the boutique hotels, they are what make us a unique place that so many people want to come and visit. We need to continue to look at programs that enhance and build capacity for our small-business community. And from a quality-of-life standpoint, I totally support and encourage the ongoing development and enhancement of our bike trails, our hiking trails, and our walking paths throughout the city. Not only do we need to invest in our outdoor open space, we need to make sure that we're investing in beautification, that we have opportunities for health and wellness for the future, not only for our residents, but for the tourists that would come to town and enjoy Palm Springs. The last crisis-level area that I have, that I'm looking at, is infrastructure, advancement in infrastructure. Crisis right now: accessible housing. I am a firm advocate for inclusionary housing development, to create housing opportunities for low-income earners, young people, and our seniors. Sometimes, offering emergency rental assistance through low-cost loans or no-cost loans may be all the difference for somebody who may be rented-burdened from having to go out on the street versus staying in their apartment or their home. Being a leader in sustainability, we have to continue to advance Palm Springs as our current council is doing on the sustainability front. We need to promote the sustainability and affordable use of our materials, earth, land, water, air, and other natural resources. This not only will help our environment, it's gonna enhance the long-term livability of our community for all residents, regardless of their socioeconomic situation. And a digital future for all, this is not a luxury any longer. We need to continue to look at programs that enhance and build capacity for our small business community. And from a quality-of-life standpoint, I totally support and encourage the ongoing development and enhancement of our bike trails, our hiking trails, and our walking paths throughout the city. Not only do we need to invest in our outdoor open space, we need to make sure that we're investing in beautification, that we have opportunities for health and wellness for the future, not only for our residents, but for the tourists that would come to town and enjoy Palm Springs. The last crisis-level area that I have, that I'm looking at, is infrastructure, advancement in infrastructure. Crisis right now: accessible housing. I am a firm advocate for inclusionary housing development to create housing opportunities for low-income earners, young people, and our seniors. Sometimes offering emergency rental assistance through low-cost loans or no-cost loans may be all the difference for somebody who may be rented-burdened from having to go out on the street versus staying in their apartment or their home. Being a leader in sustainability, we have to continue to advance Palm Springs as our current council is doing on the sustainability front. We need to promote the sustainability and affordable use of our materials, earth, land, water, air, and other natural resources. This not only will help our environment, it's going to enhance the long-term livability of our community for all residents, regardless of their socioeconomic situation. In a digital future for all, this is not a luxury any longer, this is a necessity. We have to provide high-quality internet connectivity to all persons, regardless of their income, their age, their race, their ethnicity, gender, or ability. This is a necessity. You know, we've talked about my service on the Human Rights Commission. I'm very proud of the contributions in this last year that the Human Rights Commission has contributed to the city of Palm Springs 2040 General Plan and Priority Update. The 2040 General Plan vision now includes emphasis on diversity, safe neighborhoods, diverse commercial arts, entertainment, and cultural opportunities. Our recommendations were adopted by city council for eight of the 10 priorities. We now include cultural diversity and identity as elements that make Palm Springs a one-of-a-kind resort destination. Inclusive, safe access to open space is a featured theme. We aspire to have sustainable, livable, and resilient economy and workforce. There is a focus to have accessible infrastructure for all people. And when talking about residents, we're talking about all residents, regardless of socioeconomic So I'm running for Palm Springs City Council, oops, Vanna. I had my special Vanna White helping me here. I'm running for Palm Springs City Council to protect the quality of life and provide leadership in the decision-making process as we address the three crisis-level issues of safe streets and homelessness, building capacity for our small businesses that help make Palm Springs the unique brand that it is, and support robust tourism and the hospitality industry. And finally, the third area, focus on accessible housing, protecting open space, and being a sustainability leader. I truly believe that effective government leadership reflects the people it serves. I bring diverse skills, perspectives, and proven leadership to city council. To win, I need you. I'm committed to working hard, having a voice at the table, and being an effective community, city council member. My voice is going like I was a teenager again. I'm committed to working hard, having a voice at the table, and being an effective council member. To win, I need all of you. Let's do this together. Thank you for the support, thank you for being here tonight.
Let's hear it for Ron DeHart, your next city councillor from District Three. And now, honored guests, chosen family, friends, and neighbors, it is an honor to bring to the podium former Palm Springs City Council member Jenny Foote.
Thank you, thank you very much. You just heard, you just heard one of the most qualified candidates for a seat on the city council that I have ever had the pleasure to support or that I've seen running in this city. So please give Ron another round of applause. You know, I just heard Sid Craig say something that I have to repeat. Sid was talking about Palm Springs and who runs for city council, and Sid said, "We've had some real crazies running for city council." And he's right, but we don't have a crazy now, we have one of the most qualified people that I've ever seen. Ron said what he needs is your votes, but what Ron also needs from you is he needs you to give some money to the campaign. So if you've given already, thank you, dig a little bit deeper, take an envelope, people are walking around giving envelopes out, grab an envelope before you leave, he can't run this campaign without your financial help. You know, Ron, when I first met Ron in, I think, 2014, it was 2015, he was in charge of the Day Pride Parade. And all of a sudden, he was in charge of every parade that we had in Palm Springs, and he made them all a success. I'm looking forward to seeing him on our city council, working with our council members, furthering what they've done, and creating new opportunities and new and important things for our city. So please take an envelope, he needs to get to the finish line, he needs your extra dollars. So if you haven't donated yet, please dig deep and donate. If you've donated, dig deep again and donate something else. So I'm going to walk around and I want to see, I'm going to count, I'm going to count envelopes when you leave, so take an envelope and thank you so much.
Okay, then, this has been live coverage of this historic event.
Marias, los palmeros are available for weddings, bar mitzvahs, quinceañeras, and they're going to do a little fundraising music. And eat, and make sure you have your yard signs. Make sure you pick those up so that you can advertise your support for Ron DeHart for council in District Three.